Out of my audience, we'd like to address the council for a period of no longer than five minutes. Do so at this time. Mr. Monk?
I watched you work with a concrete plant up there by Lincoln Avenue, and it made me think more about the possibility in the future of having an intermodal freight exchange facility here. It's a sort of a modern way of moving freight, piggyback style on trains that never are sorted out the old way in yards. It comes to town and you pick off trailers and put other trailers on in a very high-speed fashion, and they're building these things in Chicago. And I'm not sure of all the ramifications, but I think we hope to have intermodal transportation units every 200 miles, and that might put Champaign in a place, Champaigner Banner in a place to do that sort of thing. So I'm thinking of that area up by Henry Mattow's old yard, up by Lincoln Avenue where they got the ground-up rock. Somehow, if you're going to get a long, thin train in there, somewhere, somebody has to think about the 20-year plan and how that sort of thing might come in. It's, uh, at the moment, freight moves a lot of stuff other than coal and grain for which they're famous. They can now, using that sort of piggyback train, and especially if they have dump-dee trailers, they can move small materials. Up till now, if you moved small materials, your load of honey or whatever it is might end up in Texas and you never find it. But as we get better at some of these things, I think that I'd like to see the long-range plan include in it some form of organization for freight coming north and south. The traffic of Canadian National is up like a third in the last three, four, five years. There's a possibility if we do inter-trail use to Indianapolis that that line could open up again too, so you would have an east-west, north-south opportunity. But I think I would like to see somewhere in the overall plan coming up some sort of inclusion of a facility for an intermodal freight exchange. I also left on your desk a copy. We've been considering some of these things in a group called Rails, Trails, and Greenways. The point of that is to look at corridors and preserve corridors for nature, for trails, for infrastructure structures like power and light, fiber optics, to also preserve those beds from Danville to Bloomington to Decatur. And we've had four or five meetings so far, and that's a little summary. It's reduced in size, but idea of what we're working at. And one of those things is how do we work with freight in the future? Thank you.
Pretty much. Anyone else care to speak before the council? Does anyone have anything they'd like to talk about? Steph?
I just had a question for the mayor. Do we have dates certain set for the hearings?
That's a good question.
We don't yet.
Well, we're shooting for March 8th and March 15th to have public hearings, and we were, I can't remember, did we want to have those like at 6:00 or 6:30 before the meeting Monday nights? I don't know.
My understanding was that most council members had wanted it at 6:00.
Six o'clock, okay.
Folks need more advanced, if they have to be here at 6:00, they need more advanced notice than opening their packet on Friday and filing out.
Yeah, well, I was planning on doing them, and of course, you know, you and I have been working with Mark Sheldon to get the maps. I called him late last week. He still didn't have them, so I'm assuming that we'll get the maps by that time. And so, let's go ahead and pencil those in and just change it if we don't have the maps for that.
So March 8th and 15th would be meetings that would start, would be Monday nights when we'd have to be here, council members would have to be here at 6:00 if they want to participate in this.
Actually, we were planning on that being a public hearing. It'd be a public hearing starting at 6:00.
Prior to our council meeting.
Prior to, so it wouldn't be an actual council meeting. You know, obviously, council members can choose, you know, hopefully, council members would be able to make it at that time.
This is mine.
So if anybody wants to propose a map for the ward map, then they should bring us and have it be, have it meet the criteria for map drawing, which would be have the wards be generally of equal size, contiguous, and include the population of the wards with their map if they want to submit one.
Any other council members or staff at this particular time? If not, then we'll move on to the agenda as presented. Item number five, ordinance number 2004-02-016, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at certain, at a certain intersection. Is that Lincoln, at Lincoln? Mr. Gray?
Okay, thank you. This request was at the Traffic Commission at their January 6th meeting. What has brought this about is the recent completion of about two-thirds of a mile of North Lincoln Avenue, which is now serving the Central Waste Facility on North Lincoln Avenue. And we have the existing or old Lincoln Avenue teeing into this new roadway, and where this T-intersection occurs is where we're requesting the need for a new stop sign. So it's to the warrants and the manual uniform traffic control devices, and it's so recommended that this would be considered.
Any questions from council? If not, a motion would be in order.
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Removed and seconded, that ordinance number 2004-02-016, recommended approval for council. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Item six, ordinance number 2004-017, ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Florida Avenue, Montgomery Street, Ogletalk Avenue, and Smith Road. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. Again, at the Traffic Commission meeting on January 6th, this is the area in the Savannah Green subdivision, and a certain portion of that subdivision has been completed between Florida Avenue and Michigan Avenue, and the contractor builder is, for the most part, north of Michigan Avenue construction. So we're now into a non-construction, if you will, mode south of Michigan Avenue, hence the need to stay in the way it was originally intended. Council may recall that these streets in particular were out of the neo-traditional style, narrower than other similar residential subdivision streets, and one of the components of the narrower street would be to prohibit parking. So these ordinances are recommending that the appropriate side of the street be no parking. Generally, this is where the fire hydrants are located. We also include Florida Avenue and use width with such that would not accommodate on-street parking, but parking would have to be in the alley area where the garages are or on the side streets.
Any other questions? Questions from council? If not, a motion would be in order.
Move approval.
Second.
Removed and seconded, that item number six be recommended to council for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item seven, ordinance number 2004-02-018, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental regarding public safety, radio communications, and homeland security. Mr. Holtz.
I'll handle that one.
As well?
Assistant Chief Page and I'll handle this one. This is a short-term intergovernmental agreement between Champaign County, the city of Champaign, Ran Tooele Parkland, and the University of Illinois for the purposes, for the purpose of applying for joint grants related to homeland security. There are many public safety grants that are now becoming available in the state of Illinois in terms of grants for public safety equipment. Particularly interested in radio and interoperability of radio among these jurisdictions. What this agreement does is provide a mechanism where we can jointly apply and administer the grant. So in our interest to do this so that we can act in a manner that's, some of these things are time-sensitive, it's difficult sometimes to get all of the appropriate agencies to sign off on a structure. I know sometimes we've waited, you know, sometimes given the University of Illinois schedule, it's very difficult to get these things approved. And so what, what, what we've done here is to put together an agreement and structure so we can move forward on an intergovernmental basis without much time delay. Sets forth the responsibilities of the parties, and anything that's more technical than that, as you'll explain.
President Bat?
What, um, what type of, what stuff, what kind of equipment is it that we're wanting to get?
Primarily, these are for communications gear. One of the-
For public safety personnel to communicate with each other?
For public safety personnel. One of the lessons learned from September 11th is lots of different agencies responding to the scene to help each other. This happened at Columbine too, and people weren't able to talk to each other because they're all on different radio systems. So a lot of these grants are aimed at fix that problem by providing interoperable radio equipment to different police, so police can talk to fire and public works, and police agencies across the spectrum can talk to each other. That's primarily what most of this is. However, there's a lot of personal protective equipment and target hardening and all sorts of things coming down from homeland security from different federal organizations, and some of them are like 60-day window, and it's, we thought it would be best to have this in our pocket, ready to go, so that if we decide to apply for a grant, we don't have to go through this procedure every time with an inter-agency agreement.
And if all the public safety personnel are, if we get this equipment, aim communications equipment, does that make, does that render obsolete the existing equipment that we have in police departments and fire departments at the different jurisdictions?
No, it would be an enhancement to what we have already.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
Move approval.
Second.
Removed and approved, that item number seven-
I'd just like to thank Assistant Chief Page for taking the lead on this between all the agencies.
Removed and seconded, that item number seven go before the council for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Item number seven, passes. Item number eight, 2004-02-019, an ordinance amending Chapters 14 and 22 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Urbana, Illinois, regulate and re- for residential, dormitory, and multifamily dwellings. Mr. Gray?
If I could, I'd like to suggest that we would perhaps take item number nine and 10 and then switch to eight, because there is, as it's turned out, a sequence or a method to how we should consider these. We need to have positive recommendation, and then number eight would fall into place if-
It's okay with council, if we go to items nine and 10, and then revert back to item eight? Your pleasure.
Thank you. Item number nine then is the cycle, residential use cycle contract extension with ABC Sanitary Halling, and as committee knows, we have had a contract with an extension now with ABC for many years, and we solicited proposals, we received them late last year. Committee authorized staff to enter into negotiations, contract negotiations with ABC and with Central Waste. So we're here this evening, we do have an agreement on the contract language. ABC has reviewed and approved the contract language that's in your packet to highlight four changes in the residential recycling program for the next five years. First of all, the collection in the past on holidays could be after April 1st, and what will happen is dependent on what day of the week the holiday falls, your collection day would be the day following. So for example, if the holiday was on a Friday, your collection would be Saturday. If, if the holiday would happen to be on a Monday, it would be on a Tuesday, and it would bump everybody back accordingly. So this is one change that is in this contract. Number two is the five and six-plex units are going to be now part of the multifamily service, so the residential with the bins will be a service for units one through four. Next is we're introducing what I think is going to be a nice convenience and will probably be, I think, popular with many residents, and that is a 65-gallon wheeled cart. And what we have found is at some of the locations, essential properties, that the bins just can't quite hold all the recyclable products, and this 65-gallon wheeled cart will allow people to even put more of your cardboard and that sort of thing that tend to get bulkier into this wheeled cart. Also, one has the convenience of that it is wheeled versus the lifting, lugging motion that one has. So we're recommending that as we make a best educated guess, we would purchase 2,500 of these wheeled carts to provide to our residents on a subscription basis. Basically, residents would call, we would provide them at no charge, that cost is in bet, fees that we'll talk about in just a little bit. So we think this will be an enhancement and perhaps encourage more people to recycle or recycle larger quantities. We'll still have the smaller bins available too, and we'll provide those at requests. The number four is a significant change, and again, I think a change from a convenience standpoint, but with the way our processor does sort the recyclables, the fibers and the containers, the products now can be co-mingled. In the past, you may recall, we had the two bins because we wanted to keep them, the fibers and the containers separate. That requirement from ABC with its sorting and processor necessary, so in our education to the public in the coming weeks here, we will let folks know that you can co-mingle fibers and containers, and that will be kind of a single-stream sorting process that they do. So I think we're adding convenience with the single-stream sort, co-mingling of products. We're adding a larger container for people that have larger volumes of products. The holidays, again, there will be collection on those days, and lastly, the five and six-unit apartments will be part of the multifamily program. So I'll stop here, and before we go into the multifamily component to try and answer any question, Mr. Fletcher apologizes, he's going to be here probably about 10 minutes or 15 minutes, so if there's a technical question that he can't answer, I'll have to beg off until he gets here, so.
That's it.
Thank you. I have a technical question, but I, how big are the, the wheeled carts that are at multifamily? Are they also 65-gallon?
No, those are 90, 90 or 95-gallon. So they're, yeah, even a step larger.
I was wondering, is it your intention to collect from these 65-gallon carts every week?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, it would be on your regular use cycle day, yes.
All right, because, well, yeah, family would fill that in a week, but they could, it's possible. We have about eight people recycling in my building, and we, we fill about one and a half, but those of the 90-gallon, that's why, that's why I wondered. Okay, I guess that's actually, that's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Another question, Mr. Otto?
It says that it'll be by subscription. What does that mean?
Basically, call us. Initially, we're going to have a postcard or something that, yes, I want the 65-gallon, you mail it in, and we provide it, we deliver it.
So it's not like they have to pay extra or something?
No, yeah, I don't want to mislead, it's not, but that costs now, fees that we talk about, so-
Sure.
I mean, the community at large will pay for that, but we will provide them to anybody in the city limits.
Thanks.
Any other questions? When we get through all three of them, we can take them in on to us.
Okay.
Number 10?
Okay, number 10 then, we talked about the multifamily program, same pad tractor as we currently have, Central Waste Services, free information, they are up and running in their new facility in North Lincoln Avenue, and that's going quite well for them, and they're very pleased with the usage and the community response to date. Anyway, they will provide the five-year services for multifamily, and six-plex will then become part of the multifamily. So that's probably the only significant change to speak of, and again, they have reviewed local and corporate, Central Waste has reviewed, the CAGI have signed, and it's essentially the protections that we had in the past are still there, and not much different, other than we're going for another-
Ms. Wyman?
Um, there's also, I believe it's an addition of doing recycling collection for downtown Urbana businesses, or is that already being done?
No, we're still meeting, our, our commercial focus group is still meeting, in fact, we have a meeting coming up here, it's this week or next week, but, but that has been some of our discussions with respect to how can we address the commercial sector here, and those are some of the ideas that we're floating, and of course, this focus group will be coming with a recommendation to you here when we're down with our meeting.
Be folded into this multifamily recycling?
Well, that's an idea we had, and I think we'd like to certainly explore that. So we've not approached Central Waste at this time because we're in the discussion stages, but we think that that could be a real good offering to get, especially downtown or smaller businesses, almost treat them like a multifamily user.
Sure, and it seems to make sense since you've got some, or above the businesses that have the recycling. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Otto?
I just, I noticed on Exhibit A, the level of cost schedule, monthly service level of cost schedule, and it looks like, if you look, for example, to pick up two carts once a week costs $23 a month, to do it twice a week costs $51 a month, so your second visit $8. Any idea why it would cost more to go back a second time than the first time?
I'm sorry, I just, it's Exhibit A, I found it so-
Oh, okay, sorry. So if you look at A to the recycling agreement, picking up two carts once a week costs $23, right? Picking up two carts twice a week costs $51. So the, the second visit is costing $28, $23?
Um, I can perhaps give a scenario as to why, I think, I don't know if this is the exact answer without talking to Central Waste and get into their pricing system as to how this was done, but if you're on your, and you have the container size or the number of containers is the appropriate number, they're going to have a certain route and hit a certain part of the city. If they have to go back a second time, it's going to be kind of a special trip, it won't necessarily be as part of their pattern or route, extraordinary expense as far as deviating from a normal route. So it's either, why don't we just get a larger dumpster than if the 95-gallon toders don't work? But I think it's a disincentive to have to, you know, come back a second time, so.
Okay.
Run twice a week, pick-up situations we have, there may be space limitations too as to why there's twice a week versus a larger dumpster, but I would say the efficiency is when they go through their routes on a once-a-week cycle, if they have to backtrack and go a second time later, it's out of their ordinary scheme of covering their, covering town.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? They can go to item eight.
Okay, item eight. I, we are making change, we are making changes through 14 and 22 to reflect the number of units in the multifamily versus the residential properties. And before I get into the real details here, I'd like to clarify on page one of the draft ordinance, paragraph on page one, section one, it starts out that, section 22-101 of Chapter 22, et cetera, a more precise way of describing this would be, I would insert these words, that the definition of residential dwelling, quote-unquote residential dwelling, contained in section 22-101 of Chapter 22, taxation of the code of ordinances, et cetera, hereby amended to read. So if we could insert the definition of quote-unquote residential dwelling contained in. And this section one then just talks about how residential will be one through four pucks, okay, in the past it was five and six pucks were included. Similarly then, in section two, I would recommend that after the word "that" and before the word "section 22," we would insert the words, be definite, multifamily building, unquote, contained in. And again, the language change is to include five and six pucks in the definition of multifamily. And as we move on to section three of these ordinance changes, we then get into the recommended recycling tax, and the tax to recycling would be recommended to go up to $2.50 per month, which is an increase of 25 cents per month or $3 per year. And again, this would be a locked-in five, so the next five years, as proposed, would be $2.50 per month or $30 per year for these services, which, you know, again, does include the 65-gallon wheeled cart. Then moving to the dormitory recycling tax, there we're recommending there'd be $2 per month, and that would be an increase of $25 per month. So from $21 per year, it would go up to $24 a year, and again, that would be for the next five years, a fixed rate. Lastly, the multifamily recycling tax would be $2.50, and again, that's an increase from $22.25 per month, or it'd be $30 a year for the next five years. So fees will cover, you know, modest increases of staff administration, storage, we will have some increase in education and marketing the program. The wheeled carts, there's an expense there, and it's fairly significant. Over the next five years, we're able to keep these costs fixed at $2.50 and $2 respectively for, for multifamily slash residential and then the dormitory rate, so. And then the fourth item here is just, when will the effective tax occur? And this would be just in sync with our billing program. If you may recall, we do bill in arrears. So although the fee would go to $2.50 for residential, our bill would not be issued until next March of '05. We collect in arrears, that's the practice we've had. You get the service, then you pay for it.
Any questions?
Thank you. This is actually related to this, but it goes back. On the, on the multi, on the single-family, where they use the 65-gallon wheeled cart, would they have to wheel that cart out to the curb themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it is curbside service and that doesn't change.
And so why, why a seven-unit apartment building pays $210 a year for what appears to be the same service as a single-family home only pays $30? Okay, so it's not curbside. And, and that's what in, in the multifamily agreement, that Exhibit A, is that what that's supposed to demonstrate? Their cost is greater? And that's not, that's not what's being charged, but that was, the purpose of Exhibit A was to demonstrate what their cost is for different volumes?
Absolutely. Right. And it is, in a way, backdoor service for multifamily. You're not at the curbside necessarily, you know, picking up the materials. They have to go into the assigned spaces. So there's some downtime there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we get omnibus motion for items eight, nine, and 10? Danielle?
I move approval of ordinance number 2004 02. And then 020 and 021.
You get a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, that's items eight, nine, and 10, we're taking it in omnibus fashion. Any questions?
Um, no questions, just a couple of comments. One is, I think this is a real bargain for the people of Urbana. So I applaud staff and being able to keep the costs low. I mean, this, I really don't know where else you'd be able to go service on a weekly basis for, you know, what amounts to pennies. And I think this is one of the benefits of, you know, having the city have a hand in trying to coordinate the service for the residents of Urbana. I think we do, and this is a, this is a, a good agreement. The other thing I'm happy to see is both an increase in convenience and some clarification with the larger toters and some clarification. For the longest time, I think it's been in Urbana that you, the, the things that you put out to the recycling so meticulously, cleaning the cans and stacking the papers and et cetera, don't actually get recycled because then you see the truck come by and all of them are dumped into the same place. And so there's been a urban legend for, for a while. And I imagined, or at least was inclined to believe it myself, until I saw the receipts that proved that the recycling company was indeed recycling these products and had the receipts to show it. And so I think by telling the people of Urbana, you don't need to sort, I think clarifies that. The legend will, will go away and, and people will know that when they recycle, to the effect that the market could actually absorb it, these items will be recycled. So just wanted to thank staff, it was a good job.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on a couple of Danielle's comments. I think, you know, we try to keep improving the recycling service in Urbana. And a couple of big steps are being made. I think there's, not just Urbana, but I think the state and country have seen some leveling off of recycling participation and trying to find out what are the obstacles to increased participation? I think we've hit on two things that help make the program a lot easier to use. One, Danielle, the co-mingling of the recyclables. The easier you can make this for people, the, the more they're going to recycle and the more they're going to take the time to do it. You know, any obstacle, even if it seems minor, it can be a big obstacle to families that have very busy schedules. And so this co-mingling, I think, is a big step in the right direction. Other thing was the size of the bins themselves. And, you know, anybody that's had even a modest-sized cardboard box knows that it doesn't fit in those bins. And so if we're, I think we'll see a lot more participation for families that get the 65-gallon toter because you're going to be able to fit virtually everything that is generated in your household into that toter. So I think these are two important steps. The fact that we are able to add those, you know, keep the costs as low as we have, I think, is, is very unique. So I'm really looking forward to getting these changes in place and see if we can't bump up those participations.
Ms. Wolln?
Just want to add my appreciation for staff's work on, on this effort and being able to keep the, the price level for, for so many years into the future, I think will be, is an added benefit. I also just want to press the staff and urge the staff to continue to work on commercial recycling. Urbana certainly is ahead of the city and downstate Illinois in, in providing universal recycling for all its residents. But there's certainly been a demand, business people have asked me about expanding recycling to the businesses. And I hope that, and urge staff to continue working that we end recycling so that our commercial enterprises can also take advantage of the successful program at a, at the modest rate and price that, that the city has been able to procure with the current recycling business. Thank you.
All the questions, we're voting on items eight, nine, and 10 in omnibus fashion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Get passed.